Committees and that's in the previous bylaw as well. So the committee of the whole consent report, this is something that councils had on their wish list for quite a while. And what this is, is a report that would come out of committee of the whole that would form part of the council agenda. And it would be items that we don't anticipate any debate and it would be dealt with in one motion. So what I can do, I will note though, if there is something on that list. And I'll, I'll use Jason Barlow's Water Pollution Control Plan Annual Report. If there was something that Mayor Pankel wanted to discuss on that, he could easily pull, extract that item. On the consent report and it could be voted on separately. So there is, there is some leniency in that so that you can pull it if you would like to vote on it separately. Here is the draft agenda for council meetings and you will see that consent agenda is in the middle of that. And that's where you would have a report and I'll show you that coming up. We have the call to order, the approval of the agenda, which is new. We have been using that in our housing task force and housing advisory committee. Disclosure of interest, approval of minutes, council report updates. Delegations and presentations, consent agenda, which is new to us, motions, bylaws. Announcements, confirmatory bylaw, which isn't new to us, but we normally just put group that in with our bylaw category. As well as adjournment. So regarding the consent agenda, this section, it's section eight again spells out what the consent agenda is. And how you can extract an item from that to single it out of the consent agenda. And how it is dealt with. With a motion, the clerk shall bring one consent agenda motion forward to pass and receive all the items. In that report. And then it goes, there is an invitation to debate, but it can be dealt with in one motion. So if a member wishes to debate any item set forward in the motion, they can separate it from the consent agenda without question or debate. The consent agenda motion shall be voted and adopted separately. Amended amendments to the separated items may be proposed during the course of debate. And each separated item shall be voted on individually. So even if it is contained in the consent report. It can, if council, if a council member wants that to be extracted, it can be, and like it said, without question or debate. So I stole this from the, from the town of Carlton Place. So you can see, this is only one page of their agenda, but you can see where it is dealt with. That the council received the consent report dated April thirteenth, two thousand and one, and that's number six on this sample. And this is the sample of what that report looked like and it's all the items. Coming out of the March twenty-third Committee of the Whole meeting. And perhaps if there's questions later, I know Counselor Dwyer has, has been working within this structure for a while and may have some. Some good tips that she can share with us. Again, order of business and general rules for committee of the whole. Not much has changed from what we currently do. However, we have added. The, we've put the closed session after priority reports, but we have added a provision that we can. That item can be fluid, as you know, some, sometimes we require the in-camera issues. To be dealt with first because they have to be brought out into open session if there is a time sensitivity to it. As well, this is where we've added the committee board and external organizational, organizational updates and this is where. You would be able to give updates on the hospital board, police services board, things of that nature. Information listing, that would be maybe a listing of any standing items. Or you can use the notice of motion, which would be an example if the mayor wanted to. Inform council that he's going to bring forward discussion on remuneration at the next meeting. So that would be a bit of notice for council that a matter would be coming forward. But that you're not going to be called on it to make an answer that evening with adjournment. Again, quorum, nothing, we haven't changed anything regarding our quorum provisions, recess or adjournment. These are all the same that we currently operate in. But obviously it does need to be included within the context of the procedural bylaw. Motions, nothing, again, nothing has changed regarding the way we handle motions. The, it will be dealt differently, we won't be doing all the readings for every individual bylaw if council does move forward with a consent. Format, but nothing has really, has changed regarding motions. As you all know, if a motion is tied, it's considered defeated. We have put in, no member shall speak more than once. Until every member has an opportunity to speak towards a motion, these are all within our current procedural bylaw. We've added, we haven't added, this was in our other bylaw as well regarding reconsideration of a motion, so if council wants to revisit. Again, we need two thirds of the vote to bring something forward. To have that reconsidered, as well as the notices of intention to reconsider a mo- a motion shall be placed on the next council agenda. And we did that most recently and I apologize, I can't remember which. What item it was, but we, we did a notice of intention not too long ago. Again, motion to reconsider, none of this has changed from our previous bylaw. Should a motion to reconsider be defeated, the original motion shall remain in force and effect. Recorded votes, we still maintain that provision that any member can request a recorded vote. The members, including the mayor, shall be required to vote unless you're absent in a yea or nay fashion. And anybody who says that they will not vote on, on an issue will be deemed a negative vote. Point of privilege, this is in our current bylaw as well, that there's, if there's a. Raising of a question that concerns a member or all members and that a member believes that his rights, immunities or integrity. Or the rights, immunities or integrity of the group as a whole have been. Impunched, they can call for a point of privilege and it takes precedence over any other matters and has to be dealt with immediately. The chair shall decide upon the point of privilege and advise the members of the decision. In my twenty-three years, we've never had a point of privilege come up. But it is the, how we are dealing with it is in the procedural bylaw. Point of order, any member may raise a point of order to a violation of rules of procedure. And again, the chair shall decide upon the point of order and advise members of the decision. And unless there's an immediate appeal, the decision of the chair shall be final. If there is an appeal, the chair puts the question to council and then it's up to council to debate it and that result shall be final. Bylaws, again, there's nothing in this that's changed with how we do our current bylaws, except the format will change and be shortened if we do. Consent agenda, you won't be reading. You know, ten bylaws a meeting, we still have the confirmatory bylaw within the. Procedural bylaw, amendments to the procedural bylaw, obviously we need to give a notice of any intention of amending or repealing any part of this bylaw. And we will review the bylaw at least once every term of council. The schedules, these are some of the things that I'm hoping council will have some discussion on this evening. The inaugural meeting agenda, that's a new provision. Declaration of pecuniary interest is not new, we've had that forum in place now for a couple of years. So I haven't added it into the presentation, but that's the handy dandy form that Deputy Clerk Bennett has everybody fill out. If you, if there is a declaration, right now, as you know, we have to do it ourselves here due to COVID restrictions. Petition policy is new, so it is incorporated to the presentation. Delegation requests, we have the application process that's been spelled out for a number of years. The staffing council relation policy, that's not new either. And we did a little cheat sheet up for motions, which has been updated from the previous bylaw. So this is the inaugural meeting agenda template. There's the call to order, the roll call, the declaration of office that all of you took. Usually we have either a judge or lawyer do that, the mayor assumes the chair. And then we have some counselor remarks, as well as the mayor's inaugural remarks. And appointments to the striking committee if council chooses to have a striking committee. Petition policy, this is the new policy that we put into place. After receiving quite a number of petitions in the last couple of years, we decided, council decided that they'd like to see. An actual policy in place. So that's what's in front of you this evening and it's how council will. Take petitions when they come in, they have to be clear and concise and respectful. There can't be any libellious or false statements, there can't be any criticisms of other people or groups, must be legible handwritten. We also, we have to have the identity of the main point of contact. Contain the printed name, address and original signatures written directly on the face of the petition. As well as for, if there's an electronic, we do need the name, address and valid email address. Because we are going to be accepting e-petitions as well as the. Vintage handwritten petitions that still circulate. So this is the policy on petitions and how they will be dealt with. And how council will deal with petitions as well as a template petition form for both your. Handwritten petition as well as your electronic petition form and how they get submitted. So that's new for council's consideration. And the big item for council, at least in my opinion, for council to consider would be whether they wish to. Continue e-participation when we're out of an emergency. Context, so the municipal act does allow for e-participation. We would have to put procedures in our bylaw, but there is some decisions that council would have to make on this matter. There is definite benefits to e-participation and, and don't, please don't let the, the three items and potential benefits. You know, sway your, your vote on it. The benefits, the reduced travel costs for council member. But the increased flexibility of meetings and increased participation and, and I think the. Maybe I should have added increased public participation into the benefits because I think we've all seen the increase. Having these meetings live with public watching these meetings. There is challenges though with the, the area that we're currently in, in the council chambers, however, that's slated for renovation. Always there's could be techno- technological disruptions. Sometimes it's difficult to effectively manage a meeting and I know you all have. Your different ways of managing meetings, I know Counselor Dwyer. Mentioned once that she likes using the hand feature in Zoom. So some could perceive that as a challenge, the loss of non-verbal cues or body language. Is something that you need to think about, the impact to transparency and confidence in the local democracy. The potential of a negative vote. As a clerk, this is one of the bigger areas for me because if a member is prevented from voting electronically. But they're still present for the purpose of participating. Their failure to vote is a negative vote. So council does need to make a decision that if somebody isn't there in person, if they are, are not going to allow them to vote. On motions and bylaws. As well, if the council decides to go, go in a closed session prior to a vote and council has decided not to allow attendance in the closed sessions. For those attending electronically, something may be shared that could change their vote. And the member who is not in the closed session would be unable to participate. So that's another thing that council is going to have to consider is how they're going to allow or not allow e-participation in closed sessions. So that's something, you know, we need to think about, I want, council really needs to think about the parameters that we will or won't allow e-participation. Some of the things that I've seen from other municipalities, they've limited the number of meetings that a council member can participate electronically. We have to give, we'd like a week's notice if a member wishes to exercise this option. As well, members need to be aware that e-participation is not guaranteed. That they will be present if there's a service interruption or technical issue. Your wifi is not working, then you would not be counted as quorum for that meeting. As well, what methods we would define as electronic, telephone, video, audio conferencing, et cetera. As well, we need to have decisions on voting, quorum and closed sessions required. So those are the three big items with participation that council. A discussion is warranted for those three items. As a reminder, we did purchase e, the eScribe software, so we are using it now for our agendas and meeting prep. They have the lime, the live stream provision, but the cameras and audio equipment is something that we have to purchase. And as well, we're looking at a estimated ten to fifteen thousand for that equipment. And we also need to be aware that this provision can be expanded to allow town boards and committees to allow for e-participation at their meetings. So when you're keep, when you're having this discussion, please also keep in mind the boards. And advisory boards and committees that you sit on in the membership and their comfort level with, with e-participation. So that's the, the quick PowerPoint I did on the procedural bylaw. As always, needing or available for questions, but I'm looking forward to some discussion on the bylaw. And maybe starting to see a new procedural bylaw shape up.
Thank you very much, Director Costello and Deputy Clerk Bennett. I think there's, to me, there's two parts, we've got the report part that was reposted and that involves the e-participation discussion. And then we've got the meat and potatoes of the, of the proposed bylaw. So why don't, if anybody has any comments on the e-participation side of things. Let's open that up now. I think Director Costello, you're going to circulate examples of other electronic meeting provisions, so that research is still ongoing.
I certainly can, yeah.
Great, and, but if anybody has any comments for tonight, now would be the time on, on e-participation. Counsel Brennan and Counsel Alfred.
Thank you for that report. And I, and my understanding is, we're not going to decide on e-participation tonight. So that, which is fine with me, I mean, but as, as you know, at a first glance. We've got to remember the number of people that are watching this. I'm really excited that you've got the eScribe, which really makes it interactive in terms of watching a council meeting afterwards. You can click on whatever item you want, so. And I'd be interested, when we come back, when you get some more numbers about how many people are actually watching this. I know we've gotten some pretty impressive numbers in the past. In terms of the, the boards. It's, it's very, it's very convenient for me who, who doesn't sit on all the boards that are on stream to be able to watch them. The Municipal Heritage Committee, you know, the new committees that we formed. We're on the, Counselor Alfred and the Planning Committee, we get, sometimes there's a couple hundred people watching that. So the, the transparency and the accessibility for the, for the taxpayers is fantastic. And I think need to keep that going. In terms of counselors, I, I, I would support being able to go to a meeting if I can't be there. It wouldn't be every, and I like the idea of, of limiting the, the number. That maybe you can, you could utilize that, but I think that's, that's a really good feature, so. Those are my yearly comments on that and I look forward to talking about it another time, but. I think tonight, we're, we're really going to be doing, drilling down into the procedural bylaw, so I'll send comments on that later, but those are my comments on e-participation.
Great, thanks Counsel Brennan, Counsel Alfred.
Yeah, I, I don't think, and correct me, Director Costello, but. E-Scribe live streaming is, shouldn't take anything away from our viewership. Whether it's boards and committees or council, as many people can watch that, the recording of it or live. So I, I don't, that's not an issue for, from, from my perspective. I am. Well, this has been a, a, a learning experience going to Zoom. I think that for the most part, us being in the same room when we are undertaking discussions. Of importance to our community and I think our community expects us to be there. So again, we're not deciding anything, this is, this is, you know, just the opening. I do think that we should. Make sure that eScribe is fully employed. Deployed in that, if you look at the minute, minutes, can I go right to where that discussion took place? I think we should also with regard to accessibility, access closed captioning. Option that, that is with eScribe, so those are my initial comments, but with regard to. How many viewers we're going to have and the public participation and the people that can view it, I, I don't think that's a, that's part of this discussion. This is about us being in the room together. So those are my comments for now, but again, we're not deciding anything tonight, so.
Thanks Counsel Alfred, good, Counsel Dwyer and then Mayor Pankel.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I agree with Counselor Alfred, I think we're dealing with two separate discussions and I don't think anybody is going to vote against moving to, to. Platform that allows for wider distribution of our material within the community and, and I think that's really one of the major pros coming out of COVID. You know, is that it has forced our hand to, to modernize much quicker than perhaps we would have otherwise. With respect to attendance and meetings, I'm, I'll be honest, I'm very conflicted over that point. Because one, I think like Counselor Alfred said, it, it's, it's true, the public expects us to be. Present in a, in a physical matter at the town hall. But that said, I think that moving, what I have learned moving to a Zoom-based format. Is that the ability for younger working people to actively participate in local government. By running for office becomes much more accessible. And encouraging for us to participate in. It, it is no longer a struggle for me to race home from my full-time job at the end of the day to participate. If I need to be at the office, I can very quickly switch. From, from my day work to an evening meeting, still at the office. And I think that there are a lot of advantages to having. Having the ability to do that, to recruit different people to the composition of council and I think that, that's going to change. The values that we as a council hold when you start changing the demographic. Now I say that, I'm also cognizant of the fact that by moving to an electronic format, you may lose out on people who are, are. Less comfortable using the electronic format and, and again, that's, that's usually the representation that we have seen on councils. If you look around Lannard County, there's a significant number of. Retired professionals and some non-professionals that have been holding seats on councils for, for decades. And transitioning to a digital format for them has been very, very challenging. My last point on that though is that I think if we're going to allow a digital format for memberships to participate in. It needs to be an all or nothing. I don't think it makes sense to have the majority of council meeting in person. With one person joining in remotely. I think in a session like this where we are all joining remotely and we are all at the same advantages and disadvantages to participating in the meeting. It makes sense, but to say have Jay, I'm going to use you as an example. Jay joining in from Florida while he's on vacation and we've got Jay on the screen, I think there's going to be. Missed opportunity for him to take away the same messages that we are by sitting in the room and vice versa. So I think that if we're going to allow for e-participation by, by council members, it, it needs to be all or nothing.
Thanks Counsel Dwyer and Mayor Pankel.
I, I really agree with what's been said by my colleagues. And from my perspective, I think reducing barriers to people participating, I think it's probably a positive thing and if you go back a couple of years ago, I probably. Would not have been as supportive of the, the current environment. But once you've lived it for excessive a year, I think we've come to realize that it works very effectively. It may not be ideal, but it's effective. And I, I also wonder of a possibility that we may have people in years past. Living with physical disabilities that prevent them from getting to the council chambers, that may not have run for council purely for that reason. So, I mean, we will be making some decisions later this year regarding accessibility improvements for the council chambers. It, it's still that, that issue of making sure we can reduce barriers, barriers and make sure that this, we can. Consider people from all walks of life and all places, so I, I'm interested in advancing the dialogue and potentially participation and. Working towards a, like a solution that works for everyone.
Thanks, MacPankel and Counsel McKenna.
Great discussion, I agree that we need the eScribe full, full on. I, I would say that part of the interest in our council meetings is that there was not a lot else going on. In the last year, people couldn't go to too many things, so I don't want to give a lot of credit to our. Dynamic group here and our riveting discussions. Having said that, I, I do think that we do need to make some provisions for e-participation. Of council members. I wouldn't support it being the only option, I think it should be the exception rather than the rule. I would also, as a, one of your representatives on Lannard County Council where a lot of those. Mature elected officials that Counsel Dwyer spoke of, are there. The struggles, there were, there were very few members that struggled with Zoom meetings. What we struggled with was being connected with proper and decent wifi in rural eastern Ontario. So the issue wasn't the technology in our homes, it was. The wireless technology throughout eastern Ontario and we are going a long way at improving that, so. Just to watch the ageism, older workers have to. Have to race home as well as our younger workers. However. So just to wrap up, yes, e-participation by, and I think we do need. If a council member has to go to Calgary for a meeting or for a holiday and want to participate, absolutely they should. I, I like that idea and. Our struggle is with our accessibility of our building for accessibility, so let's get our buildings open. People with disabilities have been made. Have these, oh, and for you will give special, do something unique and they just want to be part of the mainstream. And so the mainstream is our buildings and our properties are open and accessible to all and. I would, I would welcome that, so a little bit down the middle, thank you.
Thanks, Counsel McKenna, I know Counsel Allen's having technical difficulties, but she texted me to say that. The accessible town hall is important and she prefers the live meetings, she thinks they're better and. But it is nice to be able to watch the meetings afterwards. I think personally, there's. It's, it's been, as a, as somebody with a, a full-time job, it's been great, I really want to echo Counsel Dwyer's comments. The race down Highway seven to get to the town hall in the passing, it's been eliminated, which has been great. I think accessibility wise, it's been a lot of pros, but also depending on. On people's personality types for the subcommittees of council, it's, it's been a big barrier to discussion. There's a real, putting yourself out there the way we do every week is not for everybody and a lot of the people that join our committees are, are not up for that, so. I'd like to see two parallel conversations happen, one for the council committee of the whole track. And the other for the subcommittee side of things, just so that we do acknowledge the difference between those two. I think the other side of it too is that. We want to keep doing some kind of a meeting regularly because then that keeps the infrastructure up, it keeps us resilient so that we've got the technology ready to go. So at a moment's notice, if we need to use it again, we're not kind of dusting it off from, from the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one years. So that's, it's great, I think we've got, sort of summarized, I think we, well, one last, one last.
I think Counsel Brennan seems to be having sound issues.
Seems to be a going concern, Director Costello.
So the action items I have out of this discussion, I do have some examples and samples from other municipalities, so I'll. Condense those or consolidate those and send those out to all of you so you can see what provisions other municipalities somewhat comparable to us are doing. Like it's not all municipalities allow for e-participation, but some do, so I will send those out. As well as get some updated stats for viewership for everyone. And as well, Counsel Alfred brought up a good point about the closed captioning and I made a note of that, so that is. E-Scribe does have that portal available, we, we haven't subscribed to that yet, we've been building up. Getting used to the platform so that there is an extra fee associated with, for closed captioning, but that will be included in the twenty twenty-two budget. So I, I have my action items for that portion, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, great, I just, one last. Okay, great. Just one last comment was for the $10,000 to $15,000 budget implication. Personally, I prefer to see some kind of a makeshift system where we, you know, if we bought 10 webcams for the town hall for a thousand bucks and use the existing microphone system. I think that'd be a great compromise instead of rigging this state of the art system and then renovating the town hall in a year or two and and having to pull that out. I think one, one last action item that I was hearing consensus for is that we want to be going full speed ahead with the East Crib. So whether or not we're deciding how we're going to do e meetings in the future, we want to see that technology being used to its full potential as soon as possible. So is there anything else for discussion, Counselor Brendan, or you both with us?
No, I'm just having a little problem with my audio. I may have to jump out and come back.
Okay, Counselor Allen. Counselor McKenna.
Just Ontario municipalities have only been doing this for about a year. I I did Google to see what the research is saying on how effective and what are the, what are, what are the lessons learned? There's very little research at this point, and we don't know how the public actually feel about it. We're feeling pretty positive about it. We know some, but we just don't, we don't really know. It's only been a year. So I I'm I'm still in favor of it, but I I am looking, I'm sure there's some bright researchers that are doing some good work in TV Ontario did a discussion on it, but it was, it was opinions, not research. So I I think we can go forward and adapt it as the research comes to light. Thank you.
Okay, great. So so with that, seeing no further discussion, we'll move into the procedural bylaw. We'll just go through part, starting with part one. That's the definition section. Did anybody have any comments or revisions to suggest on 1.0 definitions? Maybe I'll start it off then. One question I had was with abstaining, is that going to be recorded separately or is it just recorded as a nay on the minutes?
It depends. If you abstain and there's been, there's been a call for a recorded vote, if you abstain, it's a negative. So if if it's just a regular vote on adopting a terms of reference and you don't vote, that's called a negative vote. So we really don't have, you can't really abstain from voting. And that's a provision we currently have.
Okay, great. So good clarification for me. One question I've got is in the definitions, we've got advisory committee, standing committee, local board, task force. And I'm wondering if there are any groups that meet associated with with the town that would be outside of those definitions. And the second half of that question of my question is, can we create a term in the definitions that incorporates council committee, the whole? And those four groups always one, just for clarity and language in the in the rest of the document.
So currently, there is, so we do have definitions for advisory committees, task force. And I do believe we have committees in each of those categories. If we don't, I certainly would recommend that we we keep them in just in case there is, you know, in the not too distant future, council decides to, you know, have another committee of some type. What was the second part of your question, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, so the the definition of committee in the definitions is just committee of the whole.
Yep.
So I'm wondering if we can have a term like that because sometimes in the document, we use the term committee, but we probably mean standing committee, advisory committee, local board.
I've got you.
Of course, et cetera. So if we could have an umbrella term that would cover everybody and then single out the ones, I think it's great to have all four of them in there. I definitely want to keep them, but but just to have that umbrella term for clarity of language. Does anybody else have any comments, Counselor Alfred?
Just one, and this is not just for this section, but with regard to with regard to grammar and punctuation, would it be best, Director Cassell, if we just forwarded those to you when we catch them?
Certainly. Thank you. Yeah.
Any other comments on section one? I'm just scrolling through it here. The last one for me was just for two thirds vote. Do we need to give more definition to how that would work when there's not a multiple of three or is it good the way it is?
I can certainly see if I can expand on that, if it will be helpful. I know it is expanded upon a little bit in the reconsideration of a motion. But I'll make a note, counsel require, and if if I can find an expanded definition, I'd be happy to include it.
Okay, great. That wraps up everything I had for section one. Anybody else? Seeing nothing, we'll move on to section 2.0 interpretation. Would anybody like to start off this one? Okay, well, I can start again. The in 2.1, we've got proceedings at council. This term isn't defined in 1.0, so if we could match that up with, I forget what the term we use is. We've got on 2.3. So the rules, it says, subject to the requirements of the municipal act, the rules and regulations contained herein may be suspended by resolution for a single occasion by an affirmative vote of at least two thirds of the members present in voting, unless otherwise provided by law. And I'm wondering if this is going to give committees the leeway to bypass the procedures. Because a member is defined as any member of a committee, subcommittee, et cetera. So if we, like, could the municipal heritage committee have a motion that they're not going to follow the town's procedural bylaw and have their own process and and go that route or?
Well, they would still have to comply to the requirements under the municipal act, so they wouldn't be, that wouldn't be permitted, but the bylaw does pertain to all committees and boards as well.
Okay, so is that, I don't know.
So there are, it's saying that there are rules within the procedural bylaw that can be amended by two thirds for a single solitary subject, but it still can't be with, it still has to be within the scope of the municipal act.
Okay, so like, for example, could the municipal heritage committee say they're gonna start meeting in person, have a two thirds vote, and then they bypass the council procedures, but they're still in accordance with the municipal act?
Possibly. That might not be the best example just because of provincial restrictions, but they could suspend the, with two thirds vote, they could decide on a different meeting location if people, if you were meeting in person or something of that nature.
Okay.
Or they could, they could have a rotating chair or something.
Does anybody else have any thoughts on this one? I don't know if it's too much of an exception or not, Counselor Alfred.
No, no, I wanted to, if Carrie could give us an example, can you give us an example of of a committee doing, what would they do?
I would say, let me see here. An easy example would be something like the, I'll use the heritage committee, that the heritage committee with two thirds of the membership voted that they were gonna have a meeting at 7:00 PM instead of the 6:00 PM time slot that they normally have for their publicized meeting. Something like that, something that's deviating from the procedural bylaw. It wouldn't be that they could deviate from something under any other piece of municipal act legislation. So whether it be, you know, with two thirds, they can change the, what would be another one, maybe, no, because they have a different agenda layouts that they allow a delegation or two delegations or.
So so they couldn't say, well, we're not going to, sorry, Mr. Chair. So so they can't circumvent something like the code of conduct or the rules of procedures or there's no trap here.
No.
If someone, okay.
They still have to be in compliance with the requirements of the municipal act.
Okay.
But they could come up with their own procedure to their committee meetings, because they wouldn't have to follow the procedural bylaw.
Historically, in Smith Falls, all boards and committees have used the municipality's council's procedural bylaw. I I'm not aware of any border committee having their own procedural bylaw or procurement bylaw.
Counselor Alfred.
Yeah, and having sat sat on several committees in the last two terms that I've been on, I would say that perhaps many of those committees are not familiar at all with what our procedural bylaws are. I know certain counselors would would help because a lot of us sit on those committees, but there's no, there's no education piece for committee members as to how this all works. That would be one note I would make about that and other things like this. We don't do an education inaugural meeting when they take place to tell them how this all works. It's left up to the committee chair, who's usually new and may not be aware either in terms of code of conduct or, you know, some of the other procedural things that we have in our bylaw. They're not taught what those are. I'm not even sure if they're circulated to them, to tell you the truth.
They are circulated, but perhaps a provision about a brief orientation for boards and committees once a term.
That might be helpful.
I do, I see this as fairly low risk. Council appoints the committee members. We we appoint decent, hardworking, committed people and councils represented there. So I see it as a low risk, the way it stands.
Okay, it's personally, I'd be more comfortable if it was just council and committee to hold that had that authority, but I'm not hearing any consensus for that. So is there, if there's no other comments for section two, we'll move on to section three. So section three principles, anybody want to start off the conversation? Not seeing anything. One comment I've cut is 3.2, no item shall be placed on an agenda with respect to a matter which is not within the jurisdiction of council or committee. And I'm wondering if that would stop things like the red shirt day or the 988 emergency number from being out of this correspondence items.
Saying that they come from other municipalities requiring support for implementation, I don't think that would change.
Okay.
Those come to us from municipalities, asking them to bring, asking clerks to bring them forward to their councils for, to our councils for your attention. So I don't, that provision wouldn't change.
Good, Counselor Dwyer.
Thank you. I made this comment not in this section, but there was another reference and and when we get to it, I I think it'll become obvious. But there was another reference further in the document about limiting inclusion of items on the agenda as they pertain to the jurisdiction of the municipality. And I made the same comment about, you know, I I can appreciate that we don't want people coming to council and just talking, you know, about a product they're selling. But when it's something like, for example, the red dress program, to me, there's, there's ample value in having them come directly speak to us, even if it's not necessarily within the jurisdiction of municipal operations or our our scope under the municipal act. But to be generally receptive to receiving that type of information for information purposes and to to give general support to those, those opportunities, I think there's value in that. So perhaps it just needs to be a little bit of clarity on the wording about what's permitted and and what's not. I don't, I don't really know how to do that. I I feel like the jurisdiction of the municipality is is pretty general, but is it general enough? Like, it it's hard to say, and part of the procedural bylaw just comes down to the interpretation of the clerk, right? And so knowing that Carrie's interpretation of the policy is is that this is what it's intended to say. You know, hopefully, we have Carrie for many, many years and and that interpretation continues. But you you need to have language that's at least like in there and not subject to interpretation where somebody is going to come in and say, no, all of a sudden, the red dress is not permitted as a delegation because it's not within our jurisdiction.
Counselor Brendan and Counselor McKenna.
Yeah, I get that. I think the language here allows for some discretion and some common sense from the clerk and or the mayor. And so things like the red dress or other items that come forward that are sort of things that we want to say we support. There's lots of, lots of opportunity for that. So if you want to clean the language up a bit, but I think that the spirit of it is there.
Counselor McKenna.
Oh, I I agree with Counselor Dwyer's comments, and and I, too, was going to bring up agenda under a different section, 8.1.2. What we don't have is, what we don't have anywhere that I could find is how items get chosen to be on the actual agenda itself. There's no conversation anywhere other than the clerk shall have prepared an agenda. And now, under that, obviously fall within the jurisdiction. So there is no, how do you, who gets to set the agenda? Is it council or is it the clerk? It's a bit of a science and an art, I understand that. But I was going to bring it up later on, having a conversation about agendas and how they get set. Because it, we're kind of silent on it in here.
So, sorry, Counselor Dwyer.
Just on that point, I mean, I, having read this thoroughly over the weekend, I mean, this is pretty much verbatim the the procedural bylaw from Carlton Place. So I think to answer Counselor McKenna's point, the the way this functions is that the agenda is set operationally by the the CAO and clerk, in some cases, the mayor. But if a counselor wanted to bring forward an item for discussion, that's where the notice of motion comes in. And this is, this is a huge departure from how we've been operating. But the idea that if if what was Carrie's example earlier, that Mayor Pankow wants to raise the issue of remuneration for discussion and and debate, he would put forward a notice of motion to give us heads up. And then council would vote on said notice of motion at a consecutive meeting to say, yes, we either will debate it or no, we won't. And then after that, it comes forward for discussion. So it significantly delays our ability to act on things. But the, and and there's some sense to that. It shouldn't be an agenda created at the will of of council. It should be operational based. And in certain cases, there is a a need for council to raise something that that warrants discussion, but it it delays things significantly.
So I'm hearing most of the stuff with 3.2 is gonna come up later. Let's flag 3.2 so it gets updated with any changes that happen.
Mr. Chair, under section eight, where we have the order of business, the template committee, the whole, possibly that might be a good spot to bring that up.
Great. So yeah, let's just like that. So we update it with the future. And if there's no other comments in section three, we'll get to section four. Right, so council staff roles and responsibilities. Anybody have, Counselor Alfred, and Counselor Dwyer? You're muted.
Sorry. So just a a general comment, it's, it comes up here and it comes up again later that when we reference a schedule B, that the title is, the of schedule B is also on the schedule that's attached. So that they, I can go find schedule B. That comes up a couple of times, once here and once later on. With regard to the content of the role of members of council, I don't have any comment.
Good, Counselor Dwyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I only have one on this section, and and I'm hoping it's a point of clarity more than anything else. But Carrie, section 4.1.2 reads that all requests for substantive reports shall be by a committee of the whole directive. Under this new format is the intent to have a committee of the whole functioning on a motions based system. So we will take the recommendation of a staff report, motion it, vote it on the floor, allow for the debate, and then do a final reading and vote for action. Because that appears to be how this is written, which in this case, the directive would be a motion. Am I understanding this correctly?
So this, this clause we put, this clause is in there for requests for reports, being a committee of the whole directive. More so, we met this as a clause that if, because we've had circumstances where we've had one or two council members request to report, but we haven't seen consensus across the board. request to report, but we haven't seen consensus across the board, or at least a majority. Uh, so this off, this point is supposed to offer clarity for when staff is supposed to act on um, a request from council so that we know that there's a clear majority for requesting it and not one or two members um, to, for staff to go ahead and undertake a, a report. So that's where that point comes in.
Right. That's perfect, Carrie. And that's kind of what I was thinking. And and to me, there's real value in the way this policy has been rewritten to clean up how council is going to action given direction. Because you're right, too often, somebody will say, well, can you follow up on this? And the rest of council doesn't have buy-in and then it gets lost. But, but again, when we get down to the motion section, you're, I think we're going to see that the, the proper, the appropriate process, even at committee of the whole is to read it, vote on it, discuss it, make an amendment if needed, and then give the final vote. And thus, the minutes of committee of the whole would, would significantly reflect a consensus of council on what the direction is. So I mean, when we get there to debate that, maybe, maybe the wording directive just needs to reflect uh, the process identified later in the policy. But in reading this first section, it kind of threw me off what it was that we were actually asking committee to do.
Okay, good point. But and you're right, it's something, we just need something put in there so that staff has a clear directive of what should be done and be clear that it was a majority and not just a request from one or two council members.
Counselor McKen.
Yeah, I agree with that. There's no definition of directive and, and it isn't this council that we're building this for, for future councils. This council actually does, in my opinion, a very good job at reaching a consensus or not and giving direction to staff and checking back. Is that the majority view? Yes, it is. We, we don't have um, Lone Rangers giving a lot of direction and that's a good thing. But in future councils, that may be an issue. So we have to think we're setting the bar for the next well, for future council. So I would like to see a little clarity on what a directive actually is without getting see, I like some informality. I don't want to have to do motions. If we all do a thumbs up and say, yes, that is the directive. The, I would hate to have to start over formalizing, but then in the future, the next council, we may, you may need to so you don't want to yeah, I think I made that point. Thank you.
So there's one through here. Um I'm wondering, so is this just four point O is just for council? Council meetings or is this extrapolated committee the whole two or would this apply to any aspect of the committees, subcommittees and boards?
These roles and responsibilities cover everything from um, what, what your roles are in meetings as well as what your roles are out of meetings like this. And it's almost even when you get to the staff portions, it's kind of like a mini job description. So these are excerpts right from, um, some of these clauses are right from the municipal act, uh, counselor McGuire.
Okay, great. So I, one thing I know on some of the committees will look at the procedural bylaw to try to get direction, but then the wording is really focused on council. It's confusing whether it applies to us or not. So I'm wondering if we could change this section to members and staff roles and responsibilities, because it really uh, it seems to kind of dictate how the, how the committee group works and how the staff group works. It's more geared towards Cal, but then at least that generality will give the will give those committees some direction.
So the, the title, council McGuire?
Yeah, like, would that be better to be members, staff, those and responsibilities? So it opens it up to all, all groups.
Let me look and see how I can fix that.
Okay, uh, four point two point one is, uh, the head of council mayor should be an ex officio member of all committees of council. What does that mean in practice?
That they can attend any, uh, any, that's always been the case with our mayors, that they can attend and vote at any of the committee meetings if they, if they're there. I don't, Mayor Panko could probably speak to it. I don't think he's uh, he's used that provision if at all during your terms, Mayor Panko.
No, I haven't. And uh, to, to the point earlier in the conversation regarding uh participation and and the current environment. I mean, that's one of the benefits of having Oliver meetings recorded and the ability for any of us to back in and and listen to the discussion after the fact or during the meeting.
By virtue of his title though, he's, he's permitted to attend any task force committee or advisory board meeting.
Okay, that's um, that's interesting. I didn't appreciate that before. Cool. Um, four point three point three is in the absence of the mayor due to illness or otherwise, uh, the acting mayor shall act in the place. And I'm wondering, I, my understanding was that we had like counselor McKenna's in a role for emergency circumstances that he would step in. But then we've got the acting mayor position and I'm, I'm wondering how that works with the practice.
For the emergency plan?
Yeah.
Uh, it, we actually, that's a different piece of legislation that, that the emergency plan has been adopted under. Uh, and it's been a practice. I, I think it's more of a, a best practice that we only have one person dedicated to that, uh, to that group, just so that there's um, consistency with the file if it was to change from month to month. And and I think COVID is the perfect example that if we had a, a rotating chair uh, during COVID, it would probably be a little more difficult than having one acting mayor in place during. Uh, but that's been the standard for quite some time and it, it's the, the emergency plan is mandated under a different piece of legislation.
Okay, so that's, that language is congruent with the emergency plan situation, is there?
No.
Okay, um uh, counselor uh, Alan had a comment in four point three point eight about uh, the chair can't debate. Four point three point eight is the chair may answer questions and comment in a general way, but if the chair wishes to participate, make a motion, speak to a motion uh, or leave the chair for any other reason, the chair must first delegate the duties of the chair to a member of council. Uh, I think that's a pretty big departure from how we're operating now. Is there any, anybody want to start the debate on that? Counselor Alfred, counselor Dwyer.
Yeah, that's one I'm not in favor of at all.
Yeah. I think everybody's of that opinion.
Oh, good. Does everybody hold the same opinion? Yeah, I, I uh, I don't, I, I think um now the chair, the chair, we could say that the chair goes last to speak or something of that nature, but I, I, that, that not, that every member not be able to participate in the, in the debate would not be, I would not be in favor of that.
Counselor Dwyer and counselor Allen's got sound now?
I'll, I'll be honest, I've always thought this was a really dumb provision. Um, because in practice, yeah, you, you, you get a chair who, who does have opinions because of course they do. Why else would they run for council? Um, and so they, they do this funny little dance where they'll turn the chair over to somebody else. And honestly, it's just a waste of time. Like, just let council debate for the sake of debating. That's why we're here. But I agree with counselor Alfred's uh, option, actually, that the chair hold their opinion and speak last. Um, because I think their first duty as chair is to conduct the meeting. That's their job. Um, and, and for the sake of, you know, allowing free debate um, and facilitating, you know, Robert's rules of order, by all means, they should maybe hold their, their opinion to the end. But it, yeah, when you see this in practice, it's really dumb.
We have, yeah, counselor Alan and then.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, good. Okay. Um, yeah, no, I agree. And I, I don't think any of us ever do that on committees and boards that we're on. Uh, if I'm acting chair or even participating in that role, I do that. I listen to everybody and oftentimes I just have to nod my head or whatever. We have agreement. Um, or I speak last, but I've never, that's why I question that, the write up of that whole thing. I don't remember us ever doing that in the time I've been a council. It is, I don't see the need of it. I really don't think it's that critical for us to do any other way.
Counselor Brennan, counselor McKenna, and then back to counselor Alfred, uh, Mayor Panko. You don't have anything?
Yeah, we, we don't do that in there. Um, and that's not been the practices. We all know, we're all uh, although we don't agree on every, everything, uh, whenever someone's chair. Uh, it's always been the practice and every one of you have, uh, have done the same thing, let everyone speak. But of course, you're going to have an opinion that would deformalize it and, oh, I'm going to pass the chair over to counselor Dwyer while I speak. Well, that's just, that's um silly. And uh, you know, uh, you may want to put something in that if, if you want to put something in like, you know, if the chair wants to speak, this, the chair should speak last. Uh, but you know, I, I think that goes to the next one as well. You know, the chair should not resume the position of the chair until the chair has finished debating the issue. I mean, that's, that's a, it's a little pompous. So I think we should take that stuff out.
Yeah, I agree.
Counselor McKen.
I don't care with taking it out, but I do understand why it's there. The, the chair of the committees and this group again is exemplary in how they behave. Future council, the chair has a lot of authority and can move a discussion by allowing their favorite speaker to speak first and so, you know, it, it can't happen. You have to be, just think about a contentious issue that and if, if split council and you start um, the chair has influence over how the outcome of the meeting can go. So you just, I just caution us to now that's where your points of privilege and points of order are really important to understand how that works, but just, I understand why it's there. I wouldn't refer to it as silly. It, it's there for a reason, but I'm okay with it being taken out and worded differently. I just caution us a little bit.
Mayor Panko and then counselor Alfred.
Yeah, I mean, I, like counselor McKenna, I, I, I understand the merits of having been there and, and, and the risk of a chair taking in the opportunity to truly dominate uh, the discussion uh, to the point of potentially suppressing discussion from other members. And, but I think it, it's easy for us to get caught up in a current environment where uh, we tend not to, we don't have those issues. But I guess accounts from mechanics points, it doesn't mean they can't happen uh, in the future. So I mean, I, I agree with, with majority of my colleagues that it's something that is not um, it's, it seems like an extra step and an unnecessary step. So I, I, I tend to agree with the removal of it. I just, I guess my tempered thoughts are uh, we simply want to make sure that um we, we definitely want to muzzle a chair. Obviously, we want to make sure that there is fair and equitable distribution of, of time and discussion among all members. So I guess to, to director Castile, I guess maybe a rewording of that. Um, and, and I think the suggestion that the chair speak uh, for, potentially first or last. Uh, so that uh, there is plenty of opportunity for discussion among all members of committee.
Director Crystal.
I've just, I've made a note here. I will uh, revisit those, those two provisions. Uh, but I would remind council that we do, I will, like, we do have to, you know, kind of follow Robert's rules of order. So I, I will, you know, do my research in there and I'll do some research with other municipalities to see if we can soften that provision somewhat. Uh, but counselor McKenna is right, there is a, a reason that that provision is in there. Uh, but I will see what I can do to, uh, to massage that one a bit.
Counselor Alfred, and then if we're good, then we'll move on to.
Yeah, I would just bring to director Castile's uh, attention four, three, six, eight. Uh, maintain an appearance of impartiality on all matters that, uh, so that may if they're going to have an opinion and not have to vacate the chair, you may have to massage that one too.
Okay, great. So director Gusto, we've got clear direction on that one.
I do.
Great. Um I was wondering, uh, four point three point eleven, we've got representative council initiatives and decisions to the public were appropriate. Where would the acting mayor um, be in that kind of a position? Like, it's one thing to do the representation. It's another thing to be the spokesperson of the municipality and.
Uh, an example would I, would use if, if Mayor Panko was away on, on vacation and, and there had to be a global news was in town wanting a statement on a decision council made that you would be uh, making, you would be ma- doing the interview and expressing what the decision of council was, not your own personal opinion, whether it would have been for or against the initiative that was brought forward. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's something I wouldn't have an issue with today, but down the road, who knows, uh, counsel Brennan?
This is an anecdote. I had to do that once and the subject was bird feeders. It was a lot of fun. You're welcome.
I was just going to say, I feel like that's the scenario where you pray that Sean is still answering his phone on vacation because none of us have media training. Like, that's, i- if, if we were ever in that case, you know, like, okay, Peter does, I have a little bit, but like, the majority of us are not trained for, for media training. Like, that's where where you use your discretion and deflect a staff, you know, staff can make the comment, especially C A O Morris. But yeah, just pray Sean's answering his phone.
If he's not called Malcolm.
If you put a may in there, may represent. Okay, so oh, there's some, so four point five point seven is got, there's a lot of language included in the next regular meeting. And I'm just, if we want to take our regulars to that, because we have so many special meetings these days, like, we'll have we'll have cows that'll lead into councils and et cetera. So I think if we.
Sorry, I'm flipping between two devices here. Um, if, if we're moving on to four point five, which I gather we are. Um, Carrie, the uh, section four point five point ten speaks to the delegation of authority to place housekeeping or consolidated bylaws directly on the agenda. I think we need a, a definition of, of what housekeeping constitutes. And I think, I think, and I made this comment again elsewhere in the document, but I think when we start getting into the consent agenda items, there may be a trigger uh, for updates and consolidation with the uh, delegated authority bylaw to give staff the delegated authority to make the determination of what's going on and what's not.
No, excellent point. And the delegation of authority bylaw will, will follow this one, which will give some clarity to, I guess, what we would consider housekeeping, but that's a great point, counselor Dwyer.
Great. So that wraps up my comments before counselor Alfred, you've got some more.
Uh, just four point five point nine, we say that I've provided that um if they have a desire to be notified of particular subject matter that they have provided email contact information for same. Can we make that a little broader than just email?
Which, which provision is that?
Four point five point nine.
Okay, so they just uh, provide contact information, not specifically email?
Yeah, you don't want to inhibit because somebody doesn't have an email address, then they not be able to participate.
That's a great point. Um, any last calls for section four before we go to section five? Okay, great. Recursion right along. So section five is rules of conduct for members, staff and attendees. Anybody, uh uh, counselor Dwyer?
I have one under section five point two, unless somebody has something under section five point one. But I made the note that when two or more members wish to speak, the chair shall name the member who speaks first. And I flagged that this section doesn't deal with members of the public wishing to speak. Um, and it's not uncommon, particularly on development applications where there will be a general acceptance by the chair and, and quorum of council to allow um, a representative from, from the proponent to speak or, or answer questions specific to council. And I just wondered if we should add some wording that's a little bit more general to reflect that, you know, provided the discretion of the chair allows um, that, that members of the public may be invited to speak as well. And, and this, again, this gets into a, kind of the difference later on in the policy about the, uh, public meetings versus delegations versus deputations, which are not actually even referred to in the policy, um, but are um, used by some municipalities. I mean, a, a delegate would, would generally just be a member of the public who's coming to speak to an item on the agenda is, is it our interpretation that that's only going to occur at the beginning of the meeting or are delegates uh, going to be recognized as somebody speaking to a priority item? And I, I, I just, when I read this, I don't think that's been contemplated.
No, that is a good point. So I, I can offer some clarity, clarity around uh, the speaking at meetings and, and we can uh, add a provision for a public wishing to speak. And I, there is a provision in our current bylaw that I, uh, majority vote of council that as somebody from the public would be permitted to speak. And I there is a provision in our current bylaw that I majority vote of council that as somebody from the public would be permitted to speak.
Sorry, I have one brief follow up to Mr. Chair. The other thing I noted was that there is no contemplation in the policy about staff being invited to speak. And again, seeing this format executed in other municipalities, it, I'll be honest, typically staff don't actually speak. You you present your item in writing and it's expected that council will review it. And if they have questions, they will call upon you, but that has not been our practice here. And and so if it is our intent to continue that practice, then I think it needs to be noted.
I think that's a great point, Counselor Dwyer, Counselor Allen?
Yeah, I agree with that, and I like when staff have opportunity to speak. I mean, just thinking about some of the things that we require Troy to add, you know, his expertise to or someone else with expertise. I think that should be added. I like that.
Great, so I'm seeing nodding heads in support of that one. Counselor Dwyer?
Sorry, one last point. It's actually not my preference to have staff speaking. I I think if if staff have presented the written report, that's that's the record, that's their professional opinion. And and quite frankly, usually it's better thought through than than comments verbally at the meeting. Or alternatively, we just get a regurgitation of what's already been written in the report. My suggestion would be that that we invite staff to provide like a five minute, no more than five minutes summary of any new information that is different or updated from what has been presented in the report. Otherwise, it should be questions directed by, sorry, I've got a crying toddler in the background. It should be questions directed from council to that staff member to to address. Because I think what we're seeing in this new format is that we are very quickly going to move into the 200 page agenda. And so if we have any interest in in getting through this before 10:00 PM, that there's going to have to be some efficiencies in the conduct of our meeting. And I I think there's greater value in council asking questions and debating on the floor than to just have a verbal regurgitation of what's already public information. That's that's my two cents.
Counselor Dwyer's, put that up there, would anybody like to?
Yeah, I think I just recall times when we get into a discussion and we may be heading off on a tangent or in a direction that needs clarification from staff. And and it's important, I think they have the ability to raise their hand and add that clarity to refocus us, refocus us on we need to be discussing. I don't think it happens all that often, but I think it's important when those occasions arise that rather than us having to sort of seek out an opinion from staff, the staff have that liberty to to interject through the chair to add clarity and ensure that we are not going somewhere we need to go or shouldn't be going.
Thanks, Mayor Pankow, CEO Morris, did you have a response and we'll go to Counselor Alfred?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the intent here is is to control a debate. Typically at council, so so you wouldn't necessarily desire to have staff participate in the debate. And I would caution you against having the public participate in the debate leading up to your decision. So maybe we could relook at this and 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 look at, you know, the more free flowing debate committee versus a more formal debate where council should be debating these items in council. So so I get the point, I just wanted to to kind of refocus on the intent here is if you're debating something, it's a council debate, no one else.
That's a great point, CEO Morris, because I think later on in the document, it says, you know, council can ask staff questions, but they don't participate in the debate. So maybe it's just a matter of getting the language clarified with that that intent, Counselor Alfred, and then if there's no more, we'll move on.
Yeah, just, well, to to, I agree with some of what everyone else has said, but I also think that having staff be able to speak on something, it's also about relationship building with our taxpayers, too. They want to know and see who works for the town. And and I think that is, that has been useful to this council a few times is is people have gotten to know our staff because they have spoken. So I would just caution that we don't cut off that that ability.
Counselor Alfred, if there's no more questions on five, one to five, three, I've got a question on five, four. Counselor Alfred?
Not a question, I would just ask you in five, four, six. I believe the subsections that are quoted are incorrect.
They are.
You reference four, five, five, and it should be five, four, five.
Yep, my apologies.
There's a couple, the next five, four, nine is the same. You reference a subsection, you don't mean four, five, eight, you mean five, four, eight. There's some transposition of some of the numbers. There's a few others, but we'll come across those when we get to them.
I'm not good with numbers, apparently. So I'm a clerk.
Counselor Dwyer?
Thank you, I would just like to see on the record, objecting to provision five point four point one subsection G, which refers to not consuming food in the meeting, because I believe I am the most guilty party of that. And as someone who is constantly eating and on the fly, I I I do, I do wish to object to that, but I understand why it's there and I will do my best to conform to that policy.
Any further discussion on that one? That Council Brennan and Counselor McKenna?
Yeah, no problem taking that out. I mean, if you're there for three hours and you want to have a handful of nuts or something discreetly, I don't see why that's a problem.
Mr. Chair, I I will say that I I don't disagree. Like, like, for long meetings, I think it's appropriate to be able to recess to eat. But I I think generally speaking, if we're in the council chambers, then we should not be snacking as we go. You know, that's why we have the lounge and just as we get up to recess to go to the bathroom. If you need to get up to recess to to eat something because you haven't eaten all day, then then I think the option's there.
I think as long as it doesn't take the Gerbo's pizza to the camera room.
Just, yeah, and I know it's a fun subject. I'm guilty of looking at a text message I get through council and it it's, I think it was Kingston Council when they went to virtual meetings, the they asked the public what they thought, and the public were quite annoyed that counselors seem to be texting throughout. There's reasons for it, so there is some decorum that we want to keep in place. So I'm I'm going to work at not doing my, taking a look at a text if it comes in. And I'm going to work at, I don't, I tend not to eat, but we, I understand it, so it's it's about decorum. I I am, I'm guilty of doing this when staff have done a good job or something, and it says I can't applaud. It's the action, so I'm, I get it. And we'll keep, it it's good, we're not going to be perfect, but I'm going to work at being good. Thank you.
Counselor Alfred?
I'm not sure where it was or if it's in under rules of order, but appropriate address. We have had, not in this council, but we have had former counselors wear slogan type T shirts with things, again, looking to for decorum. So I would rather see some mention of business casual, I don't think we had any appropriate for the office that we're holding and then where we're where we are when we're doing that business.
Counselor Dwyer, that's a good point, because I think the old bylaw said we needed to wear a shirt and tie. And but then this one makes no mention of anything, Counselor Dwyer, did you have a comment on that?
I I think, I I think it's somewhere, and I'm wondering if it's in our code of conduct, actually, that when we represent council that we dress appropriately.
I could, I could look and follow up with that after the meeting. If it's not in the code of conduct, we can certainly, we can add a business casual provision to the to five, four, one.
Mike, I had a question on H, engage in telephone, I just wondered what that meant. And no person shall.
Can't talk on the phone.
Any telephone or conversation or any behavior that may be considered disruptive. So if you're on your cellphone.
Okay, physically taking calls.
Yeah. We're telephoned, kind of archaic now, isn't it?
Which is, which has happened in committee, committee meetings, so.
Counselor Dwyer?
Very disruptive.
Thank you, I think, I think generally speaking, the way this policy is being presented is is in a very formal way. And that has not been our practice, we are very in casual group. And and I think in a lot of ways, that makes us more relatable to the public, especially now that we're we're so readily available. But I think, I think it was Counselor McKenna who said that there, the intent of this is to provide some general decorum to to operations of of council and committee, and I think that's fair. And I think, I think we're all reasonable people. And, you know, if you needed to take a call because your cell phone's ringing, because your kid just fell off a scooter and hurt their knee, you know, you you get up, you leave the room, you go do that, and then you come back, right? And there are provisions within the policy that allow for counselors to temporarily temporarily leave the meeting and then come back without having it affect forum and and attendance and things like that. And so I think, you know, there's a reason that these provisions are here. Maybe we've modernized the language, take out things like veximoles and gramaphones. But, you know, generally speaking, there's, they're good to have as as practice, just in case.
I did take gramophone out of the noise by law for you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Okay, so the, so yeah, so that's a good one. Five point four point two is one that's kind of ongoing in the document, it uses the term delegate and delegation. Delegations was defined in the in the 1.0, so I'm hoping that we can just standardize that language and make sure that request as a registered delegate matches all the other language in the the schedules below. My next point came down to the apologizing where you only need a majority vote to evict somebody from the chamber, whereas most of the stuff like that needs a two thirds vote. And I'm wondering if that's if people are comfortable with the majority, or if it would be better to have a two thirds there, or if there's any opinion, Counselor Dwyer?
I think that might be per Robert's rules of order. So perhaps Carrie could check and and confirm what Robert's rules of order state and just make sure we're consistent.
I'm pretty sure that's a provision right out of Robert's rules, but I can certainly provide that tomorrow.
Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have a I have a low bar for insults, so I I think I would lower that, I I agree that it should, if if the majority council says that's inappropriate, apologize then as opposed to like revisiting a motion is something I've got a higher bar for. But I I think if someone has been insulted, let's deal with it in real time and and get that out of the way quickly, so.
Okay, I'm seeing it's important for that, I'm wondering if after the vote happens, then the member attendee has a chance to apologize. Would it be better to have that opportunity to apologize before the vote happens, just to deal with it quicker? I'm seeing nodding heads for that, so, okay, great, so Director Costello, could we move the apology to before the vote? And then if they refuse to apologize, there'll be a vote and then they're out. That's everything I had for section five, is there any other comments, Counselor McKenna?
It just that part of our our orientation was that we hold each other accountable. And hopefully, it doesn't ever come to a vote. So if if I've insulted Counselor Brennan about his choice of hockey teams or something, maybe a little more serious, he he has a responsibility to hold me accountable and say, I resent what you've said, I've taken it this way. And then I would expect that I would recognize my error and apologize right away. And it never, shouldn't have to elevate that to a vote of council. It should be done in real time in a respectful way.
I'd be happy to second Counselor Brennan's motion or point of order, Counselor Brennan.
Well, that's an excellent example that you've you've given, and I know that it would never happen, it might have happened with some other fans of other teams, but not with you, Counselor McKenna, or ever. But the the point that that I was going to make is and the, and you brought up the hockey team that I'm I'm supporting that. We're getting a little late in the hour here. I I'm going to propose that we 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 try to finish this up soon, we can come back to it. I don't know that there's urgency here. And to do it justice, we're in the two and a half hours over that. And sometimes after that's discussion, your brain kind of fogs over and you just disengage. So I'll put that out there, but of course, I would never criticize you or the hockey team.
Counselor Brennan, are you thinking seven PM or seven thirty for puck drop or?
Seven is seven. Seven is the puck drop. So we need a little, we need a little headway in between for pregame.
For snacks.
Yes.
We made it last week, Counselor Dwyer, sorry.
Okay, so a couple, so a couple of points. One, I respectfully decline Counselor Brennan's offer to to parochial this until a future meeting. I think we've been waiting for this for for a month, and we're all geared up and ready to go. So I apologize that you're going to have to postpone watching the Habs lose. But I think, I think this is it for us. The second point I want to make is is with regards to that provision that that we were just debating. I hate to say this, and I think we we are quite spoiled ourselves in this in this municipality. But I have seen where this provision has been needed because council has been completely out of control. Don't remove it, it's it's not something we're probably going to have to ever use, but you want it when it's, when you need it. Please don't remove it.
Sorry, Counselor Dwyer, can you just clarify, you're asking not to move where the apology goes or?
No, I I don't have a problem with somebody apologizing before making the motion, but or having the call, the chair call into question, but make sure that that the provisions respecting the chair's ability to call into question and to remove the member as as deemed necessary by the committee remains and that that low bar of majority quorum stays. Because when you need it, it needs to be there.
Okay, great, so I think we've got good consensus on section five now. Going back to Counselor Brennan's comment, I think despite the hockey brings up a good point, we're on page fifteen of thirty eight. I'm wondering if there's consensus to at least postpone the petition part, and then we can see how we keep moving through it. Because I know as we get into some of these other sections, it moves a lot quicker. Is that okay? So we'll we'll definitely post withdraw the petition section and all the schedules, Counselor Alfred?
Yeah, we can, we can deal with the schedule of petitions afterwards, but I I I'm with Counselor Dwyer on this. We waited a long time, it's a foundational document, and I I want to keep going.
Okay, so right now, we'll continue on to section six, if there's no more comments on five. Committees of council structure and reporting, Counselor Alfred? You're muted, morning.
Six point five, where you referenced submitting an application, I think that application should be in a schedule, attach a schedule for the application.
I think it is, Counselor Alfred.
It's not, I don't see it, it's not referred to as a schedule, so if it's there.
My apologies.
Is there, it should be, should should, an application should be a schedule when you mentioned in this document.
I was thinking of the delegation application, my apologies.
And the only other one for me is six point nine point seven, where they call to vacate the chair. Again, I think we should taking part in the debate, vacate the chair, we've done this before, we we don't like that, we don't want the chair to be able to participate. We say we.
Counselor, Counselor Dwyer, then Counselor Allen?
Thank you, this is probably just a point of clarification as well, because I believe our best practice is to have the terms of references for the committees adopted by resolution. But that doesn't seem to be what's written here. And I just want to make sure that there is like a formal blessing and acceptance of the terms of reference so that they're not just kind of standard operating procedures floating in the background.
That's a good point, I think six point two should be amended to say that that the draft terms of reference be presented to council, but that a bylaw to adopt them must be passed.
Counselor Allen and Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, I I have just a couple of points, just to what Carrie mentioned. I think it should also be stated that that can happen at different times, because we've created the House. I think it should also be stated that that can happen at a different time because we've created the housing task force and a number of things after the fact. It's not at the beginning of council. And six point four, councillors and citizens will be appointed to boards and committees by resolution at the beginning of the term or throughout the year as needed, because we often do that. We often need more people. Someone's resigned or can't do the job or whatever, or we just feel we need more people on a committee. Or we establish a new committee. It may not be at the beginning of the council term.
The point, I've noted that, thank you.
All right, councillor Brennan? Okay, sir. I had a comment on six point five, just it says citizens and sir, I'm trying to get my, yeah, so it says citizens and it doesn't define what that is in the definitions. So I'm, I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up, but I think that for our committee appointments, I think we should look at lowering that age to fourteen. I think there's a lot of great high school students in our town that would be excellent on our municipal heritage committee, especially. Now, obviously this, it might not be a, you know, the police services board is another one that might not work as well, but I'd like to see that age lowered and then just that definition of citizen there. So we know, do you have to be a resident? A lot of the terms of reference get into it, but what's, what's that base level eligibility? Another comment I had was it's committees of council structure and reporting, but just with that language, does it include the standing committee, advisory committee, local board, task force, all of that stuff, just for clarity, what, what does this section six actually apply to, which groups? Then in six point six, the term public member also happens. So just standardizing that with the citizen, one term that's clear. And the regular meeting is used again in here. That's all of mine on six point, up to six point eight, where we get into advisory committees and task forces. Does anybody else have any before six point nine, director Costello?
I was just a, a point of clarity and, and thank you for bringing that forward. I'm going to change six point five if council agrees to potential candidates interested in being appointed, because the policy we have on appointments to various boards and commissions, requests for citizens of Smiths Falls, except for on advisory committees where they allow for people outside of our jurisdiction, so that wording potential candidates would encompass that whole group. So I will make that amendment if council agrees to that.
Councillor McKenna?
I'm intrigued, Mr. Chair, by your suggestion to lower the age and if there's no municipal act or provision not to, I, I'd be interested in exploring that. Mayor Pankin, I attended the first anti-racism and discrimination task force meeting and the local guidance councillor commented on the caliber of the high school students and the maturity and the engagement in Black Lives Matter and just, just the social awareness on climate change and the activism involved in that local high school and like that, there's a dynamism there that if we're not tapping into it, except for councillor Lagarde or her colleague, then I think there might be other opportunities there. So if there's a reason not to, I'd be interested in just having more conversation at a future point about that.
Councillor Brennan?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it's necessary. Each committee has a terms of reference, so like you said, probably not appropriate for police services board or the hospital board. But each, each committee, if I'm not mistaken, does have a terms of reference, so that could be written into the committees that councillor Canada was just roughing, senior or other ones. So that could be tailor made and I don't know that needs to be included here. But when, when we form a board, then when we agreed on terms, terms of reference, then that, that could be voted for a younger person.
Point, councillor Brennan, I guess I just want to make sure there's no exclusionary language, but to director Costello.
Just historically speaking, when that bylaw was brought forward or that policy, those provisions were taken right from the same provisions that electors or candidates for municipal election have to follow, that you have to be a Canadian citizen eighteen years of age. So that's where that provision originated from.
Great. So I'm seeing nodding heads to take a look at that. So we'll get that flagged as an action item for a future cow. Councillor Alfred?
Mr. Chair, as we're two, just about two hours in, would council accept like a five minute recess? Would the chair allow us five minute recess?
Reading the new bylaw, not a hundred percent confident on the old one anymore, cause they're mixing in my head. Is that like a motion to recess then?
Yes, I would move that we recess for five minutes. If that's what we.
So there'll be no debate on that motion, councillor Dwyer seconded, all in favor? Seeing nodding heads, so that's carried.
I'll recess for two periods.
So it's six fifty will be, yeah, six fifty, we'll be back at six fifty five.
Thank you.
And
Yep.
I think if that whole section could be ordered chronologically, so the way it would happen in a meeting, it would be helpful for like if we're quick referencing that on the spot. I think that would be great. Seeing no other comments, moving on to section seven, council and committee meetings. Seven point one, any issues, seven point one, councillor Dwyer?
No, sorry, I was jumping to seven point four.
Okay, councillor Alfred?
Just a note for seven point two about titling the schedule as F. And, and seven point five, I think is per, is still ahead of, of councillor Dwyer's. But in general provision, seven point five point one, should we not be adding with regard to, shall meet the same day and notice given as stated in clause seven point three point one, which is for council meetings, but shouldn't we also include seven point four point one, which is for cow?
Yes.
Okay, so.
That's it.
We've got seven point one to seven point three. I'm seeing no questions, comment, councillor Brennan?
Yeah, I got a question about seven point two point one. And this has been sort of a longstanding concern of mine. The municipal action will occur in October twenty first or something, I think. And then the duly elected council does not sit until December, which means that, that lame duck period, in my opinion, is, is way too long. And I know that there's some, clerk Costello can enlighten me on the provisions in the municipal act. But you know, that, that like the time seems, seems excessive to me, so.
That's a great point, councillor Brennan. Is that something municipal act, why is director Costello, or?
Just pulling, I'm just trying to find that right now.
I'm seeing nodding heads on that point. Maybe we, we table it and come back to it.
Just table that. You don't have to do that now, Carrie.
Okay.
The seven point two.
Provide clarification tomorrow for sure. It's section two thirty of the municipal act.
Okay, so we'll look for follow up on seven two one.
The municipal act only states that it has to be within thirty one days after the term commences. So there is some latitude.
So that'll take us to seven point four, councillor Dwyer. Was that your section?
It was, thank you. The, the provision I flagged is section seven point four point two. The authority of committee of the whole is limited to making recommendations to council. The comment I added is that I think we should probably debate that at this point, because from time to time, for the sake of efficiency, and particularly as we begin to move into a format where we are motioning to give count, staff rather, direction. There are going to be decisions that committee of the whole is making for implementation by staff immediately. And for the sake of expediting that, rather than having a one week delay, wherein those, those decisions are not ratified until they get to council in the confirmatory bylaw. You are better to have it expressly stated in your delegated authority bylaw that committee of the whole shall be permitted to make the following decisions. And that may include providing staff direction, executing contracts that are, you know, per, per budget. I know, I know in the, in the case of Carlton Place, we've actually gone so far as to delegate authority for, for the director of development services to execute agreements for, for the equivalent of a site plan based on committee motion. So rather than delaying, because in our case it's a two week cycle, rather than delaying two weeks for the approval of that, committee has the authority to simply issue an approval on that for action by staff. So I think, I think it's perhaps something that we, we consider at this point. And, and particularly if we're going to tighten up how we're giving direction to staff, then I think perhaps committee of the whole in and of itself has reasonable authority to, to give that rather than waiting for council to ratify it.
I'm seeing nodding heads on that, councillor Dwyer, any comments or responses to that one? Councillor McKenna or Councillor Marsh, did you have a response?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think staff should do some research on the authority for the committee to give direction. So very good point. It's typically the purview of council and council alone to, to provide direction, but we can do some research.
Councillor, councillor McKenna, back to councillor Dwyer?
That was going to be my suggestion. I, I think it's worthy to look into it and, and I'd like to explore it further.
Councillor Dwyer?
Thank you. The only other example that I'll draw is that locally, we have delegated decision-making authority to other committees, notably the planning advisory committee. So they are making decisions on, on matters pertaining to minor variances and consent applications, which otherwise would default to council. So there is some amount of precedent for, for delegating the authority to make decisions to a, a committee identified. Just two cents.
Councillor Alfred?
Yeah, I, I would be interested in hearing more and I'd like, I'd like staff to, their take on it. The other part of that is sometimes there's a one week. I, I don't like making snap decisions. So yeah, I would like to hear some more about it. So yeah, I would like to hear some more about it before I would could support that.
So we'll get more information on the next draft and seven point four point two. On seven point four point one, I just the committee of the whole system is referenced, but that isn't really defined in the documents. So I was hoping we could standardize that with the rest of either define committee of the whole system or or use a different term. Seven point five point one is the one I've got a bit of an ask on. I think this this goes back to what kind of people do you want sitting around the table and how do you make the rules to let, you know, certain groups participate? So if you're working, even members of council, we've got Monday nights are a write off. You block it out in your calendar for four years. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday are really your committee nights and you've got your subcommittees, other committees, if you're working, you've got after your Counselor Dwyer's got council meetings on Tuesday nights too. So what I'm gonna suggest here and put out for discussion is that we don't meet on the fifth Monday of the month. There's roughly the same number of fifth Mondays of the month as there is Monday holidays. Could we not meet the weeks that there's a statutory holiday and then make that up on the fifth Mondays of the month to keep that consistency of your Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday schedule? Any comment on that, Counselor Alfred?
I would like to hear what staff thinks about that because it does. It could play with some of the timelines for some of the stuff that we do. So I I'd like to hear what staff thought of it.
Counselor Dwyer.
Yeah, I I'm open to discussing it. I would also be open to discussing whether or not we are going to continue with a four meetings a month system rather than moving to the consolidated committee of the whole and then council immediately after. I I mean, I I find more and more this term that we've basically been meeting twice twice a night for two separate meetings for all four Mondays. So really, we're cramming eight meetings into the month. I just think that we need to start thinking more strategically about when things are coming forward, the sequencing of meetings, how long these meetings are going to be. And I've got some more comments as we go through this document that I think may help us better schedule our meetings, but I'll I'll raise that later. But I I'm open to discussing changes to the timing of our meetings.
I'm not really seeing nodding heads. I'm not seeing. Is that something there's consensus for from people to get feedback from staff on scheduling that? Okay, I see enough. Okay, so that's seven five one. Anything else for seven five? So seven six, anything for seven six? My only one on that one was that I think seven six one and seven six two can be merged into one. There's a little bit of redundancy there. And then so any sorry, just a second. I'm getting my notes mixed up here. Mayor Panko?
Yeah, just a seven point six three that the only business to be dealt with, that special meeting, show that stayed on the agenda of the meeting. And I I think there has to be some discretion there. Tonight's probably an example with with the discovery of the American Graves on the weekend and the the need to make a a statement regarding that and things like that and or and or things that may come up that they weren't on the agenda on the Thursday but are not in need of a broad discussion.